There we are.
Hello. Welcome to Ambassador Town Hall. Today, we're gonna have a special one here. And what makes it special is because around one year ago, we analyzed Ambassador Program in Process School. We had the two workgroups then, back in today. And one of them was Process School. And there, we just came week after we had decentralization. Governor Sumit. There was one, Dorger Bush presented one of his like experiences. And there's a context like he's using the Voltaire principles. And he has done that, changed them into metrics. What I thought were like really cool things to measure in every program that is trying to create the community and also provides funding. So, well, Ambassador Program was somewhat doing it. It wasn't any proposal process or anything like that. But we already have some kind of notion of how people get rewarded and how the community gathers. And it kind of felt we are building a community. So, yeah, so we had a session. I'm not gonna go into right now showing what what results of last year. So I thought maybe we we go over again through this experience. And it's gonna take around thirty minutes where we go over like questions. And so the agenda on here the left side, but basically questions here. We have six of them. We talk about what do we think of these questions are like? What does it mean for us? So we go around table here. And after we have gone through this, we will then use a different tool. We previously we used Narabor to have a sentiment analysis. But this time, we have the opportunity to try Swarma AI from anonymous in AR team. And this will basically give us much more in-depth statistics. And I will share later. And after we have kind of done this a little bit tough game of predicting and our sentiment, we start sharing our stories like what? What the expressions of what are behind these numbers? And if we had done, I would actually like to, at the end of the session, do the voting again, just to see is there difference in our behavior? And after we have kind of shared stories, because we are somewhat now much larger than previously. We are not all in different workgroups. So maybe you have seen things from different sides and we didn't know things before we all did. And so that's basically the cool idea. Agenda on the left side, you know, drop my report. If somebody wants to take notes, I will be taking notes on. So you don't have to join Maribor, the sharing stream all the way. And also for the people who was watching later on from the YouTube. So that was basically welcome agenda and introduction to Ambassador Program, which we kind of gave. And now we basically go into what actually I updated on the ten minutes to what these questions mean to you. And then introduction to Swarung, that's gonna be much, much faster. And then vote on the options presented. So I think the voting start will be ridiculous. But basically, these are like, yeah, and then we there's a lot of small thing, what a meaningful question. But all this voting will happen just kind of in in sequence. So it's in the flow. And yeah, then we have retrospective and then maybe voting. So yeah, before I kind of go to the first section of looking into questions, does anybody have like a general question? Something they want to say or point out?
Sure is to see what it'll teach us.
And so initially, so what does these questions mean to you? So we have six questions, like how well are our repetitions organized? How predictable currently is our funding? Do we gather often enough? How well we have organized our reputation building? How clear our set of principles and roadmaps? And have we established good environment to connect and share meaning? For some of you who remember this question might feel like something is slightly changed. And some of them are like, didn't we say that we've changed them? And I changed few and I didn't change some, because I want to see what happens after we do this round table again to be come to the same conclusions. And so, and if we do them, well, it's like we have to change questions. But yeah, for the first one, let's have like a round table from clockwise. You can just start it, repeat there. And when you read the question, how well are our repetitions organized? What do what it means to you?
It does bring a question if this refers to reputation or repetitions? And if the repetitions, I'm not sure what it means.
Repetitions.
Funny here, sorry, I'm not sure if the question is intended as it is.
And just this is, and a repetition is like how many times we repeat and or iterate. So.
Yeah, okay, okay. So like learning lessons from what we do basically.
Yeah, so for example, this town hall is an iterative repetition. So we, but some communities don't have this like join weekly or show monthly. And sometimes some people are saying that we come together monthly, but they say they lower engagement. So when we later think about sentiment, we are thinking like, are we meeting too much like every day or every month? And this is good balance. So that's what is meant by repetition.
Okay, thanks, that that does help. Yeah, then in that case, you want me not to answer it, but what it means to me? This ties into learning lessons from what we do, trying to not reinvent the wheel. In that sense, of great importance. Yeah. How well? It's a great question. It's also hard to not actually answer it, but tell you what it means.
And but let's jump to the next one. How predictable currently is our funding? I think Kulaerma, because you opened your video, you popped into my second place. So what it means to you? How predictable currently is our funding? What does this question mean?
Hi, everyone. Tivo, thanks for the initiative, putting this together. It's quite amazing. I don't even know how to figure out to find time for this. So, thank you. So, how predictable currently is our funding? It's quite predictable. We are working with a procedure that succeed since I joined and have been growing. And we are, I think we have been mature our our process through different iterations and bringing, yes, reports. And the last quarter, we have this consensus experience. So that make it more predictable and the community is working towards improving each time. And we now we're going through this last revision of the concerns that some of the funding, different workgroups teams have to come up with answers from the community. And I think from what I understand, things are going are flowing. And if there were concerns that were discussed probably before. So I think, and I'm not talking about things I don't know. Because a lot of things, I came here a year or half a year since the program started. But I believe that all of this is bringing a lot of transparency of what we're doing and how we are doing it. And I think we stop doing experimentation and we're doing more consistent, bringing more consistent results. And I think that brings productivity to the funding, to which workgroup yield, task, and finally, contribution. We can divide that to all the five hundred contributions that we did in one year. Well, you can have a lot, you will have a lot of analytics there. That probably, I don't know, I shouldn't answer. I missed that part of the work game, but I think that I don't know, bring some clarity to what I see.
And so I kind of changed the way you mentioned, but in your speech, a lot of things came out. So what it means, how predictable currently is our funding? Is are our produce procedures getting better over time? We have clear procedures and flows. Do we have iterations and transparency in how are we doing things? So if they are transparent, we know it's more predictable. And do we report to each other? And it's also greater to transparency and do we analyze our collected data, which is also part of report, but it's activity and operations on that. Third question, do we gather often enough? Or person on the list is Vanessa. Would you mind to explain what does this question mean to you?
Um, yeah, it's, my first thought is what do we mean by gather? Because we gather a lot in meetings and yeah, there is some personal connection in a meeting and we get to know each other. But do we gather in any other ways? Like, I sometimes think that we underestimate the kind of online nature of our connections. And we sort of go, oh, they're not real. It's only real if we meet in person. And we don't give enough time and attention to how we might build connections emotionally and, you know, friendship wise, even if it's only online. So that's the main thought that comes to me. But also, when you say, do we gather often enough? My first response is, Christ, yes, we're always in meetings. So yeah, maybe that's that's the thing as well. Maybe we, I think we've got better. There was a point at which literally every day was back to back meetings. And now we don't do that as much, which is good.
Um, yeah, just, I have the inkling that exactly one year ago, you were the one in this same rotation, answered the same question. Because I remember what your answers, they're really similar. But the next one, how well have you organized our reputation building? Colleen Crightmore, would you try to explain what this question mean to you? Also type it in Zoom chat there. Lee, are you okay? Perhaps not. Then next one on the list would be Ayio Holu. Would you mind share what does this question mean to you? How well have you organized our reputation building? I'm just jumping to the next one. William Tatz, same thing. How will we organize our reputation building? And what does it question mean there?
So, thanks for asking. So I guess reputation extends to internal and external stakeholders. Internally, have we done a good job of stewarding our goals to to be decentralized, to gather input from everyone, to make sure that everyone feels like their voice has been heard? And then externally, do we have a clear roadmap for how we are sharing our mission as ambassadors? And I think that's certainly evolved over time as we've built out our infrastructure as well. So that's my interpretation of the question is both internal and external. And I might add one more facet to that. And I think, I think I scoped internally. Initially, I scoped it only to the Ambassador Program. But of course, if we define internally as Singularity Net as a whole and the sixteen or so kind of brands that are represented, how much visibility and what does our reputation look like in the organization as a whole?
Fifth question, how clear are our set of principles and roadmaps to sustain growth? Rob Bedoya, if you're here, would you mind sharing what does this question mean to you? Wonder if this message you just mentioned is for what William shared. Oh, yeah, currently we are on a time crunch show. I'm not like asking everybody to give few opinions on the same question. But yeah, if if you have something that is missing and I'm jumping over, you can always type to Zoom chat or directly into the Maribor. It's a research, I assume you're on that text. Right now, we are not really looking for an answer, like how clear is our set of principles? The question more is like, what does this question mean to you? For example, like how, for for me would be like then, how clear are our set of principles? So is there a framework in Ambassador Program? Or is there a documentation that describes any of the roadmaps? Or how to be our strategies, how to keep on sustaining? And that is basically my angle, what this question asks. Notice you unmuted yourself, but we actually cannot hear you. Because I kind of answered it. And great, last question. Have you established a good environment to connect and share meaning? Fogan Tuso, what does this question mean to you? Fogan, are you with us? Jumping to Judith, Williams, are you here with us? I think we're scrambling to find microphones. Okay, next one. Daniel Etiam, are you with us? How about Walter?
Good evening. I think we're great.
Okay, nice. Can you you share your own thoughts? What does it mean? What this question means to you? Have we established a good environment to connect and share meaning?
Gosh, that's too abstract for my analytical mind. I think we're okay. One thing that I would hope we can improve is collaboration, simply because, you know, but at least in my experience, you know, some, some of the units are more welcoming than others, again, at least in my personal experience. So, yeah, I'm in a game of decentralization or more, you know, I'd rather we hang together than split off into little cliques. That's just an overall attitude. There are plenty of people doing fun stuff together. So it's not a big problem to me. But I think we could do more together.
Okay, so I took basically four guiding questions out of your speech. Are we collaborating? Are we welcoming new people to be as spaces where crowds can gather? Can we tackle bigger projects together?
No, not even necessarily new people. But like to me, people are people. It's just like they have their interests and skill sets and and so on. And I think like somehow more conversations about doing stuff together would be would be useful. It's like, you know, units are executing their plans. And it's not, by default, I'm not sure there is striving for collaboration above and beyond that. I think there should be an ongoing, hey, guys, we're working on this, what do you think? You know, do you need any help? Would you like to plug in? More like a standing invitation to to do stuff together.
Right, so these are our six questions. And we will be looking, when we go into Swarma, and we're gonna go into and also ask, basically, try to find out which are the three most important questions for us. And but now we are going to share a little bit intro. So because it has taken a bit more time than expected. And I will browse through this quickly. And one thing to make sure is that when we are gathering ourselves to this new platform. And the goal there is not to get to the consensus. So then you say, I think my number two or whatever I want to choose, you don't have to choose because somebody else is, or most of the other people are choosing something else. Because when we are gonna go into, okay, I'm gonna slide through this and quickly then slide tech. At the beginning, that's what is one where you kind of know we are, we are doing a lot of swarm activities. So we're putting this collective knowledge together. And basically, I have some information, what this tool does and kind of brings out our pros and cons of our collaboration here. And but when we are in the tool, so this is basically what we're gonna see is this on the right side. And like a swan logo. And that is a magnet in the middle. And we only always have six options, or maybe not always, but maximum six options where we want to get that magnet towards to. And and why I said we don't have to reach consensus is because we're gonna later see a lot of analytical decisions. And for example, if you are the ones who want to take this twenty, forty percent and you are completely sure that if everybody hears you out, you're gonna find more people to listen. Because when we are gonna do this voting, we only have one minute to just see. And what's suggested that we don't actually persuade or talk when we are voting and just to see more cleaner results. And but yeah, that's up to our culture, if we want to get and screen at the same time when we do decision making. So that's like one thing about these results. There are, yeah, there are a few things that go under like, if you change decisions, your conviction changes when, and there are some things that this tool is tracking when you are voting. And but that's gets too detailed, we don't have to go in that one. They share some examples where they use, who use it and what results there are. I think at the end, there was a little bit more. There's another tool they shared, which we may use or not. So yeah, this is like how it's gonna work. We will have, when we start joining in, we're gonna have automatic user ID. On the left side, we can chat there. And they didn't bring any picture or stuff. But then in the middle, this tool will be and which where you're gonna change your path. And every time there is a question on top, when we start answering, and also we're gonna rotate it, so it's gonna happen magically. Yeah, that's basically what it looks like. And later, analytics or dashboards, there are a few examples which we cannot see and from the result. And now there is one thing, I'm not sure if we are able to do that. So when we get into the room, so let's see, if I can now start this up. By a dashboard. This one was ours. Yep, start session. So when we log in, I'm gonna give you a link on Zoom chat, so be prepared. And everybody from that link will come to this site I'm going to also share. And yeah, everybody will, I think I will be screen sharing all the time. I'm not sure if I should be voting, because everybody will see what I'm voting. But actually, we want to see what other people are voting. And because if now, okay, you finally put in, so let's see if I can invite from here. Maybe this is it. Okay, let's try, let's break it. If you can click this, this will start appearing here. And when you log in, write your Discord name in this left side chat. And later, I will be able to assume look the chat and then or see recording. And we can add our own statistics into this analytics we showed previously on this one. So there is an option to append more data. And what data we could get this card is like, okay, look, are there any, what I'm interested in is sees, are there any other people who like from other different workgroups that have different sentiment? So let's say onboarding is more, is like things, something is going extremely good, while I'm not traditionally considered extremely poor. And and this is like just see on different workgroups, for example.
Tivo, Tivo, I have a question. How do we change or we put our Discord name?
Yeah, you just type it in the chat. We cannot change our Discord names at this current trial version or like our outcomes. And while you are here, you can already start playing with the puck. Right now, it just, you can feel that when you are close to the that thing, yeah, that's called puck, then you're dragging it. And the further away you are, the, and your puck is green, everybody else is yellow. The fast, the stronger you pull, the closer it is. And if it's too close, then you don't pull anything. So it's, this is kind of the way it does. And the goal is to kind of get to the Uh, and the goal is to kind of get to the age to some kind of answer. You can always have a person then pull it there. And when we reach to the point and stay there, it should. Start again, basically. Right now, we don't answer any questions, but it looks like it doesn't end. So that's the game. We have six people joined, but we have twenty one people in Zoom. Do we have issues with the link? Or something?
People are not clicking it. Seems the issue. Surely we can get more than six in.
Uh, we pulled to, I never done a yes or no, so should we wait more people to join? It's a question. Uh, ask confirm. And this is how it works. You can already be ready, what you want to vote on. And then we can, yeah, track to the puck. And then you can see how it kind of works. Some people are against, so if now three people are against, it's gonna go to no. So this is how it's. So kind of working with. And on the bottom, you can see we have one minute. Later, if you don't reach the consensus, if you just have analytical data of like where the conviction was. Are people undecided? Oh, Major Defi, welcome. You are, you're gonna drop. Uh, in Zoom chat, Swarm AI, I think. Right now, we are. Doing, oh no, I'm not on this monitor.
I feel like my laptop track path is costing me governance power. I would rather have a mouse in this case.
Could be possible. And yeah, so that was one example. As you saw, we had twenty five percent of conviction rate should be made for new people, so we are very undecided on this one. Uh, might as well not wait for more people. Um, but we have now three, four, five, six, seven, nine person in. Um, and only one person said something in chat. So if you're inside in the chat and you want to kind of enrich our data analytics after we have finished. Write your Discord name in the chat, right?
You mean in the chat of the Zoom or in the chats of the?
Uh, in, yeah, in the chat of the Swarm AI.
Okay.
Okay, seven people. It's more than half of the Zoom call, so I guess that's. It's not twenty, but there's some bots as well in the call, right? At least one.
We are getting some names in one, two, three. So half of the Discord names are in the chat. Epi, you just broke the consensus. Now your majority is on the chat. Yeah, I did not expect how much my time it may take to wait for people and get accustomed. So, but I think we are now somewhat. Oh no, two people left. Oh no, we're losing people. But anyway, so what I'm gonna do is, I assume you're gonna, you you don't have to actually look at the Zoom screen. I'm showing it because. Then later, we have something to watch on Ambassador Download. Um, but on my site, only I can do it, so I have prepared some questions with us and some. Uh, chat tips, so I'm gonna just drop some chat tips to you. Um, which I already kind of mentioned, but now we have reminders. And the first question will be, how well our reputations are organized? And I'm okay with that question. And do we want to have some thinking time? I think I had to do it before, so to let now. So I'm gonna confirm the question. And now everybody can be ready to answer or or if they are not ready, just keep the buck in middle. And say, how will you think our our repetitions are going to? Yeah, five people will vote in, or six. Oh, I see a lot of more box now. Oh my God, you're very connected. Oh yeah, no voting. God damn, I can't mute myself. I guess I lose voting power. Think we have a stalemate. Some people say they are too confusing, so at least one puck is totally. I can give that direction. Brain freeze. Okay, now I remember. We do have to actually want to at the end. I guess that was like, hmm, but yeah, after thirty seconds, we might want to still go to the and. The result, but not sure. Right now, I'm I'm gonna go with my strategy. So that was the first question. Now let's get the second one. Ask. Okay, how predictable is our? Is our funding? Yeah, I saw people asking what context for predictable. And and that's basically just like. So you, if you should ask funding, how how likely are you receive that? Um, is it clear who is going to receive that? Like, oh. This clarity, where do you ask, where do you go? That was kind of the main premise. But yeah, I don't miss that at the beginning, so. Next question, do we gather often enough? Okay. Good question. How clear? Okay, Master, how clear are our set of principles and roadmaps to sustain growth? So that was the framework and such. Okay. Sixth question. Have we established good environment to connect and share meaning? Now, we are going. Now we are done with the questions themselves, but well, with the with the program questions, but now it's more about the questions we asked. So we have six options here. And on the on the sides, and basically what we want to do is we. Which question is the least important for ambassador program? So we are right now deciding what we take out, which is the least important question. And we will do that same thing three times. But this time, we do want to find the consensus. We we need to find the results. So when when you see we're fighting or something, we, somebody has to give up. Uh, okay. I did not expect that. It is what it is. Now I'm gonna do that same question again, and we took out this question. And. Uh, I need to. Re-run this. Okay, so seven. That way, and ask. Okay. Hmm. Fine. Well, it is surprising. Okay. Just reminding, we are voting out least important questions. And last time. Okay, these are the three questions we have. More of how does this thing gonna affect us is basically something. For um future, uh, but for now, we are done with this thing. I'm going to now. Stop this warm session. Funny, it's called Swarm Session. It's not even settled in. Uh, but. I automatically logs me out. But I think I need to just log in again. I may actually take a while before we see any analytics. I'm not sure how fast it. Gets itself done. Okay, so we have nine questions. If I click on. There. Click on single link. Yep, so we got them. We had. Yeah, so it starts with this question. We had seven users. The first session was. Do we wait for more people? And this is just like our playful statistics. And we also see our recordings. That's, I'm now wondering how is best to actually. Look at ourselves. Okay, so for example, how well are our repetitions organized? We can see that. We were either rough draft. And need more progress. Some people also felt like it's too confusing. So it's definitely, and I, yeah, there are some people who were thought it's going really good. So. What what are the thoughts? Those who um. Pull towards a rough draft or too confusing. And would you mind sharing your opinion and why you think our repetitions? Are at the very early stage? Anybody interested to? Okay, maybe let's do it easier than whoever he chooses or something. Would he mind share his story, why he chose the way he chose, or G?
I can, sure. Oh, go for it.
No, no, Peter, please.
Sure, um, I went for uh two. I do feel progress is made, uh, but it will need more refinement. Yeah, in a way, it's a bit of a generic answer, which is always correct, I feel. Um, but in this specific case, um, I do think we're doing. Quite a bunch of stuff which we're not capturing, but at the same time, we are capturing a lot of stuff. Um. That's basically why I went for second option.
Yeah, if I can add to that, I totally agree. The best that shows consent, uh. A way not to diminish what we have been achieving. Of course, there's a lot to improve, but. And I think that we've brain freeze because we were, it was the first question. And we were figuring out how to how to make it work, but I think we can do like a consent place in our hands. We are doing progress, so. Yeah. Same. Chris?
Yeah, and for for me, um, I kind of align with what what Peter was saying. The question itself didn't quite capture. I think that the repetitions or what we're doing is actually great. It's just. There's so much going on that it's becoming a capacity issue. And almost having to split off uh. Themes in a way to create space for those things to happen. So I think the way that everything's being handled is actually excellent. It's just that. Capacity is reducing and and themes are increasing.
That's interesting. Yeah, from that side, to me, I also feel, and that's why I voted more for like actually going extremely good. Because I see a lot of repetition in this environment. We we have quarterly systems, we are doing budget iterations, we are doing. Like collective gathering repetition, the tone holes are happening all the time. There are new spaces where we just. Share news out to each other or outreach. So each golden team just mentioned are somewhat repeating on their behaviors. And now we also see iterations of these uh repetitions doing like increasing quality. So. Video work group is still video work group, but it's much more of video work group than it was a year ago, because they have no more people. They. They have more processes that are more like in like in place. Um, and. And the facilitation, the people are are switching, which is also somewhat kind of showing that the process repeating. So I was pretty positive on that side. Yes, Vanessa?
Yeah, that. Yeah, on that question, I kept changing my mind because I kept thinking of different things. It's quite a complex um question and quite a big question. And you know, I was thinking, oh yeah, we're doing really well. And then I think of something and go, ah, yeah, but actually we could do more. And it's almost like the foundation of this repetition and iteration thing is documenting. And I know. And I know everyone's just gonna go, yeah, well, you would say that, but if we don't document what we did, we don't know where to move on from. So, yeah. I kept thinking, we're doing well, but we could do more. So, yeah.
Let's jump to the next question we have in analytics. Um yeah, definitely these statistics we get. We we will do some more, I guess, framework on that. And right now I'm just going to take the simple this diagram and based on that. Just analyze our responses and try to hear each other out. Next question is how predictable currently is our funding? And. Yeah. What's your thoughts on the? On that one?
Which answer is the majority one there, Tivo? I can't really see.
Ah, yeah, the progress is being made was actually chosen decision. And some very few people mentioned that rough draft started. And some people were like, it's getting good, but then seeing as others from that, they said, okay, actually, progress is being made. So. Pretty, yeah, aligned thought on here and the on the rating here.
Yeah, you have plenty of thoughts on the topic. Um in a way, it's there's there's complete uncertainty, I would say. Uh we're depending on um allocation from the supervisory council. It's in a crypto token which has a variable. Um fiat value. Um there's um a whole bunch of work groups competing for that budget. Um. So that that in itself is a ton of um uncertainty um and unpredictability. At the same time, compared to um three quarters ago. It was completely messy and and now we starting to have processes in place and. Procedures are getting a bit more formal, like putting uh more requirements, uh more specific um outlines on where which money goes. So from my perspective, we're we're improving a lot, but there's some inherent uh unpredictability to our setup, to the concept.
Yeah, that's a lot of things you mentioned. I don't even know if I have anything to add here. Um I also agree kind of the fact that it's it's starting to kind of look something more predictable. But I I really want to wait for how the proposal and report combination starts to work out. And and if it's gonna work out, I hopefully remember that. And then next time we do this analysis, I can put three up. Instead of, because yeah, we we kind of sometimes end to. Like jumping from next call to another call and not seeing the progress and always feeling like, have you so left behind? Because there's so much work to do. Then anybody else say wants to add some insights on predictability of funding on ambassador program?
I just agreed with uh what Peter was saying that. There's just systematically, there's there's some unpredictability kind of baked in. I I a bit struggled with the importance of that question, to be honest, is. It is going to be unpredictable due to the circumstances, and I think it is in the best shape it could be within those circumstances.
Going to the third question. One, only positive thinking, guys. And the question was, do we gather often enough? And the majority were. Agree, we are doing very well on gatherings. And one. The person looks like was slightly in the too confusing part, but I guess maybe that was just getting started to. See, and yes, like. Slash sign to show on the both directions. Yeah, I think we are gathering a lot. Maybe even too much. I can't even defend everything. But shows it's working, in my opinion. But somebody want to. Share something else.
Yeah, if nobody's speaking up, I'll share it. Um I. Well, I fully agree on what you say. It's a good thing. It means um we're scaling, right? If you cannot as one person attend everything, um. Well, there's tons of stuff going on, so. Yeah, and then there's quite a um. Bunch of work groups that uh have biweekly meetings, which seems to work out for them. I don't think right now we've got meet uh monthly meetups. Is that everything is either. Biweekly or weekly.
Yeah.
I don't know, feels feels like if a work group would. The the any work group can can decide what they want, right? So. In my mind, it's in a good place.
Actually, this um result uh raises a very good question. How do we get it to extremely good? What is what is still missing? Why didn't you put extremely good? Does anybody have an idea on that? Or it's just a feeling that something is missing, but you you don't know what it is? And I'll just add that always you can improve. Avoid that. We we are having a lot of. Uh still a lot of things to do. Get better. This is what I see. Yeah. Well, when we previously kind of dissected the question, what does it mean to gather? And it then wanting, of course, is like we do a lot of online gatherings. But I guess there what makes it extremely good is. Uh local gatherings for accept. Right now, we haven't done anything. I think I guess that would be a next level thing. And also. And at least like that would help to do this emotional connections. And I'm, yeah, the asynchronous connection is also something that. I know, I I don't know, it's it's how can we even improve it? Because the tools we use is Discord and Mattermost Telecom, and they are so. They're like very formatted to large scale. They are not like designed for community building. And or maybe they are, but the the way we are trying to do things, they are actually sometimes. Not good at all. So. Yeah, I guess some kind of phone-on platform for discussions, but yeah, finding that one is like a challenge. I'm just trying to kind of ideate what could get us to that extremely good state. But I guess that would be another discussion.
I think that's a great question, to be honest, and my take on that is that the. The frequency of meeting perfectly matches the need of the group of people that are. So if it's a guild or a work group. It just it's the perfect frequency for that particular group of people.
How would I write it down? Free kids of crooks and thieves is uh, I know, in flower in. See, guys, but.
Matches the, I guess, matches the need of the group. It's essentially where the frequency matches the need.
All right, let's go to the next one. How well. Uh are have you organized our reputation building? Last time we not went not into describing how. Our reputation comes from contribution and we care less about reputation. This time it didn't happen. I can't even see that question. Did you skip that question? One, two, three, four, five. Oh, no, we skipped one version. Okay. The next one. How clear our set of principles and roadmaps to sustain? Ah, that's a point. Then the there's a reason why we might want to. Do it again. At least that question. We did all the questions. So yeah, how clear is our set of principles and the roadmap to cooperate? Yep. And here we answered, there is a heavy selection on too confusing. You need to change direction or slow down. And uh some people are tracking. And feel like something is now starting. So that's a very. Yeah. Dangerous place to be, I would say. And what are your people's thoughts on that? Can I be called up? Yeah. I myself also feel like we we have started more like. Documentation. Uh I I'm, I think we still don't have like a clear roadmap. We are still at the same place where we have like missions and care. However, what is strongly improved is we have onboarding work group compared to last time. And that has brought us like more like onboarding material for slides, videos, texts. Links now to Discord chat. Everything is much more smoother to bring in people and there are processes to bring kind of. Adopt to say new people. So I would say. Like there is a sus- more like sustained growth than this um. Invisible feel of uh that there is a process in place. Um but how clear it is, I would say, not really. I would say that it's more like an MVP that, okay, these processes are working and these materials are working, but they are. Not like set into standards, I would say. And maybe that kind of makes it. And that's what one side. Another thing is. Yeah, but well, yeah, I just have a clear vision of reading the slide that can set of principles, but I'm not sure if it's clear for everybody. Right after get over when I ask, I know probably, but if I ask like. All of Coji or. And Judith, what are the principles? Where do you find them? Would he know where to find them? That's like a. That's the thing that is missing. And. Yeah. That's my stance. I see Curtis.
Yeah, I um. I I at least from what I'm observing, it feels like a lot of the conversations that are happening are actually asking the question, should. We have a clear roadmap and set of principles? Because there's conversations around, like you said, to expand on what you said, Tivo, you have a clear understanding of what it means. Should that be the same as what other people envision for it? Does it need to be a unified vision of a roadmap instead of principles? And I think that's still honestly being discussed. Is should it be in the first place?
Uh maybe this is where this confusion is happening and like change of direction. And to me, even this is unity in a sense or cohesion when we agree that, hey, we are gonna have a set of. Roadmaps and set of missions that we are aligned to, but. You can add more and this is the process how we do it. And this way I know that this is kind of, this is, this is how it works. These are the principles. This is even if it's chaotic roadmap, I know it's a chaotic. Right now, it's implicit. It's just. Something I didn't mention. Yeah, but that's a good take. And that probably highlights why this it is what it is.
Um that kind of makes me wonder, um right now we did introduce like the. On the quarterly proposals. There's some outline. Uh if you combine all the proposals into one, you've somewhat got a quarter roadmap. Maybe at some point we can uh ask work groups to tie that in into a bigger one-year roadmap and then. You know, over the quarters, work towards that that bigger goal. Uh I wouldn't go as far to put it as mandatory, but just as a, yeah. Thought on this.
That's interesting, but I quite like the fact that we think quarterly because it means we can be more responsive. If you've got something a year ahead, it's kind of, it fixes you quite a lot and you can't respond to changing conditions as well.
I fully agree there, yes.
I find it's kind of scale appropriate though. So like what what Peter said, if you annually you have a goal and then quarterly, how do those those quarterly proposals? Right, inject and and benefit the overall. It's just more of a scale, scale concern.
Yeah, I agree with. Both things. We're not discussing semantics. You have a roadmap and then you. The main goal, but having a one year. Objective roadmap. Oh, no, Kula, you are. Cutting off.
From what I did, which was not everything, uh was mostly aligned with Curtis.
Ready? Let's look at the last question. Have we established good environment to connect and share meaning? And here we are mostly good and very well. So I would say pretty positive. Um but yeah, I would say things don't rule. Um. Anybody wants to elaborate why his or her sentiment was as it was? I actually saw some people are feeling like progress is being made and started again from, you might want to change direction. Um it it might be just like it's most was coming from bottom. Yeah, if if that was somebody who was like thinking, I'm not sure if this is going to the right direction, would be amazing to render, get your thoughts into it. Nobody takes the microphone, so. I would, from myself, I I'm not sure what did I vote for, either a three or four, and. Mainly because, well, we have pretty good place where you can connect. It's very easy to connect. Um well, now actually, as I look at the results, I would even maybe increase it, the whatever I wanted to to extremely good because. It has, the people I meet are. Very nice to kind of talk to and do stuff, although I'm not really sharing like. Values and emotions, um as was mentioned somewhere else, like in do we gather often and also. But I kind of see like. Well, it's it's even goes beyond this environment itself, which we we are pulling like decentralized communities. And through this journey, like this ambassador program is one program where we do this. And but for me, I it started mostly with Spartan Capitalist, which is also another program that do similar things. And over these things, I found now friends and people. Why now talk even more than my like actual friends and live real life and then. And sometimes I even feel like, like I have more to talk with people in this environment than with my family or friends because. Yeah, it just turned my. yeah, it just turned my hobby into yeah, work and life and so I think that's a very amazing environment to kind of be able to share these things and so I'm quite positive that the environment created. If you have any questions, ideas, that is always somewhere to put it and 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 get insight of and sentiment basically. Sometimes takes a longer, longer time to get response, which is like a big thing if you drop like a document. But if you have a one question, you usually get an answer quite quickly.
I think one of the things that I was thinking about that is good about creating spaces to share meaning is that we do have a kind of diversity with the fact that there's different workgroups with different approaches. So I get a sort of composite meeting, meaning if I've got a thought, I might share it in one workgroup and get one perspective and then in another and get a different perspective. So it feels more complete. And if we were all just homogenous, you wouldn't get that.
And from my perspective, this isn't a reflection of, I'd say, performance of the group. It's just an observation of there's a lot of work groups and guilds I'd like to participate in, but they meet at two, three or four AM my time and it's a little challenging, but you know, that's again, not, not a reflection of performance, just inevitable consequence.
And it makes me wonder, I mean, for almost two years now, we have this on more or less that slot, uh, the specific town hall. Um, also noting with GMO posts in chat. At some point you just assume it is like that, right? We don't have like a I don't know, regular check on, on, hey, are our time slots still making sense? And in a way you also get kind of like you get this tunnel vision because if you're hosted in Eurocentric times, you attract Europeans, which then on the next check makes you more inclined to go with a European focused time slot. I'm not sure if there's a fix for that, uh, but I do think it's important to, yeah, just to be aware of it. Um, without any concrete suggestion there, but yeah. If people have suggestions, please.
Yeah. Okay, so basically we went through the questions and I would switch a topic in a sense like what do you think of doing the entire voting again as we now have kind of discussed a little bit of these questions more with narratives? Would you think that would be good time spent? And then we can also cover this missing question that we definitely didn't. One of them.
It's not what you asked, Tevo, but I just wondered, um, with the analytics. I noticed that with most of the questions, we had quite a strong sentiment and alignment. And I wondered, is it possible to see if the person who or the people who were not in that alignment was always the same people? I think there's something where it's like you can see where it falls into groups or doesn't. And I was just curious if we can see that or if it's kind of everybody is mixed in.
We, yes, we can see that, um, on the other stock, we have, um, there is that total fish and individual users. So everybody has their ID and it shows for example, this whoever this ID X V eighties, you can see for this question, how predictable is our current funding? He was voting first on nowhere, then it was, this is going very well. Then he lost a bit of luck, then he changed to we are good enough and then he moved finally now and then he finally sat on the now the second one. Okay, yes. And then finally progress has been made and there he was until basically to the end. Then one person chose uh, either we are good, good enough and just stayed there basically forever or was inactive even.
That's not quite what I was meaning. It was more like when you can see that there's a strong alignment and it seems like most people were voting for one option in the end. Can we see if the people who didn't vote that way was always the same people? That's kind of what I'm looking for.
Well, through this analytics, you will get that answer. So if we put that information to the Excel, we would see who is opposing with others. And then it takes another question and see who is opposing others. And then if there is a correlation, so it's, yeah, it doesn't have like
I thought there was, I was almost sure that there was, um, some kind of analytic graph that showed it more simply. Maybe I'm imagining that I seen that.
Yeah, from these eight options, I don't see that. To me, this gives this raw data that gives that answer. Uh, choice switches. Yeah, we can see who's switching sources. But yeah, it doesn't, it gives like one session analytics. It doesn't aggregate sessions. So that will need to do ourselves. Yeah, I'm starting a new session. I will get, I'm not sure is it a new code or is it the same code, but I'm gonna drop it into Zoom chat. And yeah, let's, let's do that. Vote again. This time you don't have to put your uh, discordator chat. We will use the first, the results as the analysis. Yeah, I'm just gonna wait for it. The baby is question text around one minute then switch time. So in seven to eight minutes, we should be done with the questions. Um, yeah, and if you need to go, as I see some people are leaving, I want to call to is one last question I have from this session is about this tool itself. What do you think of this tool? If you are at the end, if you stay here at the after 10 minutes and when we finish the voting, then then we can have a roundabout about that. If you leave and you have some opinions or something to share, you can also write in Zoom chat. So we can capture that. People are slowly getting in. Yeah, I think it does take a little time to load. Six people ready for decision making. And nineteen people in chat. Five people. Oh no. It's almost as an uh, proposal consenting. So many core contributors, but most of you don't want to contribute to decision making. Not sure if this corridor more is chewing from the mobile. If you are in, then I will start as I don't know what people will join. And if you're wondering how do you join, then in Zoom chat, there's a link. I can put it down again. It's trial swarm AI. And this will take you to this page. I'm sharing speed for we caught one more person in, I'll say. You are a mean mod, Mr. Pitch. All right, then let's get it started. First question. How well are our repetitions organized? So after this talk, let's see, have we found a bit more cohesion within ourselves? Four people are pulling back. If you want to have a say, you, your magnet is clean and you are trying to pull it towards an answer. And answers you can see on the edges. But I see, I see one new person, so. Positive people are losing.
Nice to see how people switch from three to five just to get away from number two.
And next question. How predictable is our current funding? And now we know that some unpredictability is put in. How much we want to put it on ambassador program, how much we want to put it on our operational community. Technique. Do we gather often enough? Do we gather? Okay, hard synchronously. We put our thoughts together. Wondering if you just change. Ah no, it's very similar. I know why this kept. Ah no, actually, it's now, now we have this first time. How well we organize our reputation building? Cannot look the answer from cardboard this time. Yeah. That's interesting because too confusing, change it and extremely well is next to each other. Yes, these are the same question as before and the just top like is, is our answers going to change our sentiment after we have discussed it? And also we missed one question. So nice that we are going to win it again. Um, if anything, we will learn that we don't have to do it twice. Does change anything then? Well, just shows that you should do it. How clear our set of principles and roadmaps to sustain growth? Somebody left us like, ah, damn it. My power. Final question. Have we established a good environment to connect and share meaning? Yeah, that was very quick. Um, all right, this will be then it for that. Now, okay, let's see if I can. Oh, I can leave the session and now you just start that doing nothing. So you can close the page, uh, but then I won't see the uh, okay, then I need to close the session. Yes, I won't see the dashboards. So yes, swarm stop, get out of here, keep my magnets back. And then over then swarm AI and then I have to sign in again. Get through. Six questions. Yes. And the first question. As our repetitions notes. So yeah, now with the second one, the answer is much more, much clearer. I guess that would be saying that probably the first time we needed was a very maybe was, was not that clear. The second option is very much very similar. The third question, we gather often enough. Is also far more clear. And this time we don't have this people who are pulling towards confusion and actually also not extremely good. More like taken a back a little, saw the improvements. But mainly majority and it still remains the same. Reputation building, this is something we totally missed. First run. So that's an interesting result. So we're sustaining growth. This also this much time actually far more and consensus on the And consensus on the starting and yeah. Yeah, and less of other pulling directions, more like clear direction. So it does seem that like on some question that, um, that talk through has changed. Like the age cases. Oh, and even answer changed on the last question. So I'm, I'm, I know, I wouldn't say that was a bad experience. We, we did find some information. And actually that the fact that the blast times were changed is, is interesting. But yeah, in general, I would say that probably we don't need to do double voting as it's just. How largely keeps their answer same. And then of course I'm gonna unlock the last year rewards. And to see the sentiment of last year, basically then you will need to go to the process with motherboard. This will take us to this long process with Mara we had and one of these sessions has this. Yeah, voting below and there we can see that. If you want to compare these two. Then we voted basically. The first one, the two. Um, oh yeah, now everything is actually moved one less, so progress is being made, progress is being made. With one year, you're still being, progress is being made. On the front of predictable funding. And we had rough stuff and we also started progress which being made, so pretty much same one year later. Um, on how often we gather enough. This has turned into they have much more to the right side. We had few extremely goods, few goods. Um, they're all over the place, but covered much of the ground, but now it's. Yeah, clearly better. Then how organized is our reputation? That is very interesting. Well, we didn't have anything in place in one ethical, I guess, by, by the sentiment before and now we are. We have. People are feeling that what they are doing is being recognized, I guess, I would say is, is the answer here. And the reputation is somehow seeping through. On the growth fact, I think that is a question I changed is to how clear our set of principles and roadmaps. Previously, we had nothing and we still have nothing. So actually looks like previously. And progress has been made, so we were in better position one year ago. Now we can, can't do, now we are making rough drafts now. So on that sense, even though this question is also slightly changed, so maybe that had an impact. And finally, have we established good environment and shared meaning? Previously it was progress is being made and now we have made a little more progress. We are in good phase. Looks like we are improving on at least two fronts, extremely well on the reputation building. Something I did not expect because it's not really our real focus, I guess, but maybe this is like an after a fact of. Of, um, I don't know, what, what kind of made that sentiment switch show every lecture? Because we haven't changed anything. In, in the way of, as of how we recognize or. Yep. So. Well, the result sees what it is. We, at least I'm gonna spend a bit more time on analyzing the results and getting more out of our results and then maybe this thing I just kind of mentioned through, we make one document that outlines it. And if somebody is also interested in this. Yeah, share me in Discord, I can share the access to the analytics. If somebody wants to, I don't know, do analytics, let, anything. And you are know how to do Excel or Power BI or whatever tools are using also, you can contact me, we can share distributed tasks. There are plenty of things to kind of look and each of them takes time, so. Any contribution is welcome if you want to put yourself out there on that. Uh, to connect me is in Discord itself, use process to channel, I think that's appropriate or ambassador channel. Um, before we exit this kind of discussion, uh, my last question would be. What do you think of the tool itself we used today? That's one AI tool. Is it something that you would like to use more and what were the downsides you think we had with this tool? And was this a good use case for this thing?
Yes, it was absolutely a use, useful use case, definitely. I think for me, the first time I used the tool, I thought it was more complex than it actually is. Um, I'm interested in the idea that it was quite a small group because I, I, I felt like we could each have an influence quite strongly. If there was 200 people, I think you'd feel a bit voiceless. And for me, I really would like to be able to see if there are factions kind of thing, like if the person or the two people or the three people who are always going against the majority are always the same people or not. That's what's missing for me.
I enjoyed, uh, the tool myself, but I, I think what really complimented it the, the most in my opinion was having that discussion after the first time and getting people's perspective and opinion that could sway or um, empower others' perspective. So then the second time around, it became a little bit more unified or at least more of a strong opinion. And that's to me extremely valuable.
I'd like to second that, uh, first of all, um, yeah, that, that, there's a lot of value in that. Um, one, something of a downside I see is, um, in a way. Like the, the process of selecting, um, what the average is, like looking back on the session we did a year ago. Um, that we just clicked one of the stickies and that's it. Like you don't spend thirty or forty-five, I don't, I'm not even sure what the timer was at. Um, yeah, you don't spend that time and I'm, I'm not sure if during this pulling with magnets, I, I don't know, in a way it's like. If you're on mobile, for example, yada, yada, you know, there's, there's some hindrances there, um, but I'm not sure if during this process, like. You're not really changing, right? At, at some point you feel like, ah, okay, this one I actually wanted to so far out of reach, then let's get one closer maybe. But then that doesn't really change your opinion, I feel, I imagine at least. So in a way it's, it's just, yeah, it's, it's very interesting. I'm not quite convinced if I see the full upside compared to just bam, give a, give a number or a letter and, and that's your, that's your opinion. Yeah, there's also pointing out in chat, uh, Giam is saying like, uh, we can, um, get quite a bit more use maybe if we develop the questions, um, a bit more, because that's also something, and you know, if it's a circle and the two extremes of the answers are next to each other, by design, that feels a bit wrong. Um. Not sure if that's specifically what you were aiming at, uh, Giam or in chat, but, um, the, the questions, well, now they do, we're pretty much. That's something, yeah, big compliments for, for pulling that in with last year's, um, exercise and just that. I think that's, that's great to see the progress, uh, made there.
Chat, I see the tool does seem to be 100% right on strategy is used in the tool, so more important that the strategy fits than the tooling. So it does depend on what are your, yeah, voting. Because we kind of knew that the questions are working from the last year and. Oh yeah, and what we didn't look actually, I think I closed this one, I already, right? I've opened. Is what are the most important questions this year? This one, nine questions and the last question was. Between three of them and we took out this, so how well our repetitions organized? This. How clear is our principles and roadmaps this? And how will we have organized reputation? So these are three most important things for all us. And last year, the most, three most important, well, last year it was harder to get three most important things then because we took, we did sentiment. And one, the only thing we found out was basically that this, I guess, this four would tick. Which, yeah, somewhat are similar, although it's now changes like last year. How well our repetition is organized wasn't that important compared to this year's. So that's also something interesting and that's why I didn't take questions off. Although it seems like to be gathered often enough is maybe not the question we need to worry about. But again, you know.
Kind of makes sense, right? It's something that tends to solve itself. If there's not enough meetings, people will start meeting more. If there's too many meetings, people will stop going, like.
That's a good point, good.
Well, then again, it did spark, uh, also conversation a bit broader than just normal meetings. So in that sense, I'm, I'm I'm not against the question, it's just to be clear.
But that's a good, um, a kind of remark because that will push me, so if we have a third version of doing it. Uh, I will look into the water principle and see what is some, what it is aligned with and maybe we can get more precise question that we do want to measure. Well, I guess, um, we are done. We had a lot of decision making, a lot of, uh, uh, analyzing a bit of feedback to the unannounced team for their tool. We will have this question coming up, um, more than coming weeks. The trial we have is two weeks. Um. Not sure if I'm gonna use that tool in other workgroups yet, but I do would like to kind of try it more on different items. This was sentiment, but maybe addressing some kind of workgroup, um. Um, questions where we just want to get some metrics in. And so if you are interested in these kinds of things tomorrow in knowledge based place workgroup. I will see if I try to use that because we are gonna work on budgets for asynchronous items and we have some results. And yeah, whoever has access, if anybody else wants access or create, use that tool, ask me. I can give you the account and give you a quick guidance of use.
Oh, this phone, sorry, sorry. Um. Yeah, I just want to say two things. TiVo, you freaking rock the thing. Uh, I don't even know how to pull time as I mentioned before. Um. And, and yeah, I, I believe we can use this tool with a more specific, um, direction if you build to, in towards, uh, building a roadmap and all these things that is, is worth discussing today. If you use this kind of tool towards building a roadmap and build, discussing ideas or concrete. We can pull a lot of this. Uh, wait a minute, I need one more minute. This is a kid trying to play with my phone, so. So, so, uh, I, I believe we have a, a one more chance to use. And, uh, so later on, probably we can, can use some time slot for put some questions together and maybe try it again with, uh, with what you were just saying, with a different, uh, direction or strategy. Um, I believe we can, we can, we can have a lot of information from it and thank you for putting this together, TiVo. Really good stuff.
I'll second that as well. Thanks a lot, Trevor. Um, if I may, one question on the tool, um. We were thinking in the governance workgroup earlier today to potentially use it for the um, core contributor role naming discussion, uh, but this makes me wonder like it, um, it doesn't support async, right? It's, it's all live, go, 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 and that's it.
Yeah.
So that, well, for some, some discussions are, are not, uh, that's not ideal, I guess. Um, okay, okay, great, good to know.
That's what makes it kind of interesting because it is allied Google for very kind of.
There's, um, cause I, when I was researching this swarm AI and unanimous, they actually have a strategy for that where you prepare uh, for the live survey with the questions, so they get to asynchronously, but they do have to attend the live to be able to commit their, their response.
Yeah. What this tool brings out is more of this, you know, like what it is, this collective inter, in a sense that you see what are the others in your group thinking and then you can align. So it's like doing Google forms ten times, like. Same Google form, but you don't want to do it ten times, but in here you kind of see the rapid response and that's why it's easy to do it ten times.
Yeah, and, and then you can measure also intensity on the response. Having real time, everybody pulling for to the same direction shows something very concrete that you can't measure on a Google form. Um, how people get, uh, decision gets stuck between two positions, that's something you can measure in different kind of tools. So I think, I think, uh, we, we shouldn't need more time for that because there's a lot of things going on, but, uh, still we can squeeze a lot, uh, from it, uh, in the next session. Or have a special session, so. Um, but yeah, I, I like it. Um, looking forward to see what the other tool can do for opening. But this one. It, it would have been fun to have twenty magnets there. And I have to say, Peter, I, I use it on my phone when, when driving, when driving, Inez almost killed me. And I have to say, Peter, I I use it on my phone when when driving, when driving, Inez almost killed me. And I'm pulling uh France from school, I have a chance to log in from my phone. And fingers work better on the phone than on the on the pad, and the magnet was, yeah, the power of the magnet, so. Yeah, I think the tool is is pretty pretty amazing. The layout is ugly, but it works. And yeah, you can design probably what the the guy mentioned, not use all the slot for questions. So you keep space between the response, you know, um. And that, so designing this with more time with an idea of how we can do a roadmapping, we should do this and that. It it can be, it can throw up great stuff, but okay, sorry for my my audio.
Audio game, good. Purpose, you have a hand up.
Sorry, that was accidental.
Something that I remember, um that also when we did the test runs, that I realized. If we also, if we want to go reality, we can also kind of feel how or see. The behaviors, decision-making behaviors different people have. For example, when I was training and analytics pretty much showed me I'm undecided, and I know I'm undecided, because I actually. I like to go with the majority. And to me, like, a lot of things are good enough, I just, let's do something, let's get the line and do it. And and that was very apparent in using this tool. I didn't really, because I. When I start voting or do stuff, I don't really think of that. But then the results show you do this, and the person tell me, hey, you are you are undecided, because you're. You basically always go along with whoever is the majority. And they accept if there's a very specific decision, but we had like a very random test decision, so I want, I didn't want to convict. Fear, and I didn't have any strong conviction in any way. So that's also something we might see it, and what also one else, I guess, is looking at this like action of stuff, which also. And very kind of show our decision-making behavior and. Although I'm not sure how deep we go there, but we, this could probably give us insight, why are the consent form results the way they are? Because you see different people reacting.
Yeah, it was interesting when we did the trial with the guy from the company, he was saying that. They've designed it to reward conviction, so. Your magnet gets less powerful if you change your mind to align with the majority. Like, say you start off pulling towards um point A, and then everybody else is pulling towards point C, and you go, okay, I'll join in. You lose power. I was really interested in why they designed it that way, and. You know, I think I've I deliberately phrased it as like, why are you rewarding dogmatism rather than collaboration? And he was like, well, we don't see it that way. But it is interesting to me that if you've got that that tendency to go to go with the majority. If you're voting in like a Google form or whatever, you don't know what the majority is. So you can't do that behavior, and it's just quite interesting to me that this tool allows that collaborative behavior more.
Yeah, I guess the only way you see me undecided is when I facilitate and ask, should we do this? And as soon as somebody says something, okay, we do this, and then another person is like, no, I'm not sure this is like the right way. And then I'm like, back to zero, okay, we don't do this. Next, next topic. In treasure liquid, I have been doing like these decisions very fast and a lot, and some people are not happy on what what it is.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know if anybody else felt this, but with the tool, it's quite, it's like a game, and. I think I was more likely to say, oh, let's see if I can influence it. And I was getting a little bit absorbed by that, rather than going with what I actually thought. I was just going, oh, let's just see if I can get it over here instead. So I just wondered if anybody else was doing that, or is it just me? Do you know, I mean, I do think it might influence how. What decisions you get, because it's like gamified.
I think you're spot on there. I had some of it, um, not all the time. I mean. It's also important that the answer, yeah, well, depends on what the answer, uh if it, if the majority is aligned, let's say. But that's also, yeah, like I mentioned earlier, like then you find yourself trying to root for B while actually you started off at A and the majority is going for B or C, like. Yeah, there's no Google form that supports that, let's say. Not to say it's a bad thing by definition, it really depends um on the topics you're you're exploring, right?
And I think we might get quite bored of the game-like nature of it, and we might end up just going, look, I just want a quick decision, so. I don't know, maybe it would make us kind of compromise more with each other, just because we're quite bored of the process.
Makes me wonder, can you just put the timer to a different amount of seconds? I imagine you can. Like set it to five seconds or ten maybe, or rather than, I think it was forty-five.
Yeah, I think you can, can't you?
I think you cannot actually change the uptime, but you can change, you can add more time before the time starts. Right now is one, as soon as I press ask, it basically three, two, one, go. But there's a think time like this, thirty seconds, and this is what's used, like if you want to share something or kind of get prepared. Before the question starts, but they have a specific one minute, I guess, because that produces. Data, and and what makes this tool is is the data behind it, not the decision itself, I guess. But the behavior behind the data. But I do agree that maybe if you would use it more, we probably start to gamify it also more, because right now we're all like. Using it, but after you use it like one hundred times, you probably feel the way it's working. And it might be get easier, it might get a bit gamified. In the end, I feel we're always kind of like pretty good results. And then it comes down to what are the questions we always need for this tool compared to Google for. Because, yeah, you don't want, should we do this or that questions in here, they should be. This question should be hard, in my opinion, in order to make that tool useful. And requires like three dogs, so we cannot choose both, we need to choose either one of this, and then. Yeah, here and then I wouldn't probably use the tool. I will use it in the options or more. And I think also when you have an audience that is diverse, then it's good. And more, so it's, we just ten people deciding, it might not be a thing we really need, we just can come to call and say what you want. But if we get more, it's gonna get harder.
Yeah, sorry, sorry, can drop it. Definitely, it's not an everyday use tool for decision making. I think I think it would be good to apply it on a specific scenario for decisions that will be uh necessary for. Uh one-year decision, so it's something that you will use specifically for something uh. For long-term strategies, I'm a specific questions. Uh, because you're, as you mentioned, you're not looking for just the response, it's also all this data that is packing up. Sentiment, the decision, the intention of a decision, uh. You will identify the nodes and the why, so I definitely not see a every monthly use for this, for community decisions, for. For a bunch of stuff that is not even needed, year and hour. So it's very specific. I I like the 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 data behind the. The decisions, um, so probably we have more time to think on how we can use it, why we can use it. Uh specifically on the why more than how and.
To answer that in two weeks, if we get wise, we use it, then. Because right now it's in trial, but if you want to actually own it, it's gonna have a quite a hefty cost on it. So getting clear on why we use it, when we use it, this is actually our next two, three week result. That we can take back to anonymous AI.
I mean, one of the, one of the things I wasn't keen on when we tested it the first time is that it is, it's all about majority rule, which is something I'm not particularly. Keen on, but the way you've used it tonight, and we've looked at it as like a sort of. Initial temperature taking and then a discussion and then, oh, have we changed, rather than as something to actually make a decision. You know, we're not going to necessarily go with the majority, we're just looking at it to kind of get a sense of how people are feeling. I feel that is a more productive way to use it in a decentralized community.
Right, right, and and going back to the test, it was a marketer. States guy, and the discussion was about a logo. So there was no really uh organizational design, Tiwo had just put something. Uh there is have a rational behind it, and we we didn't have free days to do it, so. Uh I think we can pull something and say, okay, we wanna, next year, let's try this, this, this and that, okay, how will think about it, okay? We have these tools, this is kind of a tool we can. Go find some good use, using it this way. So, yeah, I totally agree with you, the test wasn't as good as this.
I was just gonna ask, do you know if the pricing is always like a a subscription for a certain amount of time? Or can you buy it on a case-by-case basis, like kind of?
I think you can buy it uh on a base, you can prepare and you can use it. Uh I think it's twenty-five hundred a month, so you will, I think that you can know how it is. Get ready, build the whole thing, put three months of prep on prep, and probably we can use it for a month. Uh but that's the the price uh that I was the responder on email to. I don't know if you discussed this with the this guy.
Um, not indefinitely, but I am interested also in other price because I feel feel like. We're not as far able to kind of pay for every month, but for example, yearly or quarterly, have some very specific event. Maybe quarterly is even too open, but like. Once or twice a year, we get one month subscription, just so we could run our usual events. And the reason why we're doing it, in another way, we, what uh I'm trying to kind of achieve is. Get anonymous AI kind of be aware of what we are doing and kind of get this collaboration going, so maybe. Uh making that subscription possible or some other revenue method, because. We also provide data to them and they are, they're using that tool as a tenant, that's actually swarm. Like I like the fact that what Kobermo one day mentioned, like, most of these people are taking this tool, are using this Ferrari on. Some test runs, but we are using it for actual products.
Yeah, yeah, they're using just what Cheetos versus uh, you know, like Lays or Pepsi against Coca. It's what they're using, you could tell it. Well, they probably have some secret, you know, plans for it. For sure, uh they use it in the army, okay, and universities, so not only that, but I think that what. Uh you guys been doing here, and I've been just learning, is it's amazing. Well, you you have two days, man, imagine what you guys can do with this word. So we can get it when we need it, that's a good thing, we need to, it's not a car laying on the on the garage. It's a tool that we can buy and use when when we have, and we we create this collaboration with them, being as the Snet. It's something we can both collaborate, our community, their community, so it's, I I really like the way you are thinking.
They they are building these tools, that means they are interested in collaboration, decentralization. I give it, there must be some topic that aligns with us, I feel. They are not in this space, but of course, they're a bit of. A level of heaven, and I would say like the level of singularity and foundation compared to a muscle program, because they are like. Very high costs and and services they offer, but they are at the like, I would say, pinnacle of this service layers. Because when we look at back to catalyst, remember the first swarm session on the town hall, they asked, I would look, the service was four thousand per a town hall. What? And so, so there are, and then we've been, and then they were professors, they were teaching this stuff, but. Now we're now in kind of the same situation, but it's, it's very hard to find a community that is building these kinds of very specific tools and. So this is my first time, I see like a real-time decision-making tool. But I see people building them, but they're like, they're starting to put them, they're like crowdfunding, trying to get an MVP. But the the that's, this is beyond MVP, this is years of building after it already brought the question down. And also I've noticed chat, a bit of a discussion on the magnets and hiding magnets is also actually possible, but yes, you do see. But it, maybe this is something we could have also tested, but to see. Because you wouldn't see how much, where the majority is taking, you will see where the buck is moving, but you don't see. For for example, one issue, one question, I think it was. That went straight up was this last question, have established a good environment. And I was pulling to the right side, somebody is pulling to the left side, one was pulling to the top, and it was just moving up, because. Edges were like kind of tight, that only only up was pulling. Uh, so this, if you would have removed the magnets, you wouldn't know that the majority is an upper majority, right, like. You will kind of, you you see where it's moving, but you don't know is it the majority, or it's just one magnet more than you. Or equal amount of magnets. Actually, in that case, we thought it was more magnets, but. Technically, it would have gone up, even if one magnet would have gone up, and rest of them are inside it.
That's also an issue in a way, right? Like if these two are not complete opposites, it doesn't make sense that they cancel each other out. Yeah, maybe I'm just getting stuck on that aspect of it, but um.
Yeah, I mean, it, they technically should get stuck if where people are spread. But yet then they have to kind of go, not opposite, but even like down opposite, like. Even even worse than they think, in order to kind of put that weight back for bait.
Uh, looking at the clock, we might be getting close to wrap-up time-ish. Big thanks to everybody sticking around. Also, thanks for Tevo for hosting today, but just a big shout out to everybody still in the room. We usually stop an hour and thirteen minutes before this time. Sorry, I didn't, I don't like, I don't mean to cut short or anything, we're way over time, so we can have some more minutes, no problem at all.
Okay, good, but well, we we are done the discussion. I even then I stopped sharing screen, I was taking notes, because. There were more insights about AI, the tool itself, and a bit on our results, um. So yeah, but I think we covered a lot, and that was amazing, a result, I would say. But you're heavily over time, I underestimated. I added thirty minutes more, but. You get it.
It's 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 good discussions to have, so that's, it's completely, yeah, it's perfectly fine. I I think you stopped screen sharing quite some time ago already, actually, I heard you mention it, but. That's right, okay, maybe I misunderstood, sorry.
Yeah, thirty minutes ago, but we're, discussion were going, so I was continuing to take notes.
Amazing. Yeah, let's have a quick check in the room if anybody wants to add something. There's just eight people sleeping behind the computer screen, like. Oh, thanks for being here, sticking around.
Thank you, Tiwo. That was that was really good, right? Thank you, Peter, for for leading the host of this, okay, again.
All credits go to Tevo. That's uh, yeah, great session.
Yeah, I guess we're done. Then see you tomorrow. The first session is in our space, I think, so. You see me again if you like what I do. On different contexts.
Awesome. That's it. Ten years to see. Um, yeah, also noting that for some people, that's three AM at night.
Oh, yeah, we got it. Speaking of time zone changes, treasury recall, the time is probably going to change. If you notice, I've shared it in the channel though. But we bring it up in this week again.
So, well, you can just, you will keep the calendar events on the moment you want it to be, right? So.
Yeah, this week nothing is gonna change, but it looks like the majority is moving either Monday or Friday for future decisions.
Yeah, I think Monday is a good, is a good day to discuss. But you, you know.
And it goes morning time, so who's one Americans will forget.
I have to jump off. Thank you, guys. It was a good one. See you guys tomorrow.
All right. Have a good one.